Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session, reconvene in the regular meeting of the City Council.
It's been moved and seconded for passage.
There is no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2014-074, an ordinance authorizing payment to John Watts, an Office of Public Utilities employee for settlement of workman's compensation claims for case number 07-WC-008328, 07-WC-008329, 10-WC-21790, 10-WC-47954, 11-WC-003812, The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2014-074 on final passage.
It's been moved and seconded for passage.
Discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is 2014-075, an ordinance authorizing payments to Greg Bandi, an Office of Public Utilities employee, to settle workman's compensation claims for case number 11-WC-45858 and 12-WC-18636. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2014-075 on final passage.
It's been moved and seconded for discussion.
All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 8-2. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-080, an ordinance accepting proposal number UE14-23, with Professional Adjustment Bureau of Mid-America Incorporated for third-party collection services for past two utility accounts in an amount not to exceed $201,000 for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2014-080 on final passage.
It's been moved and seconded for passage.
Discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-086, an ordinance re-establishing the intent of the city to construct a supplemental public water supply as amended. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2014-086 on final passage. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? We've had...
Mayor, I...this was amended in the...do we have a copy of this with the amendment engrossed into it? Copy of the resolution or the ordinance? We amended it at the Committee of the Whole.
That was with friendly amendment from...
Right. Joe Alderman-McMenamin offered an amendment that was approved by the council and the...I looked at the...
What says on here has amended?
Ordinance, proposed ordinance, on the City Clerk's website today, and it didn't have the amendment engrossed into it, so...
We don't have it, but they're both available to you in PDF format right there, the original and the amendment.
Well, the amendment, but not the amendment engrossed into the language?
Correct.
Okay. So, the engrossing, if this passes, the engrossing will then occur after it passes?
As soon as legal gets it to me, I will put it in the file.
Also, I'm a clerk, and the...when you...on our screens, when you push up the amendment, we amended the amendment, and I think we added some additional language, and so I agree with Alderman and Kamn, it's important to get the language to the point that it was when we last met at the Committee of the Whole.
And as soon as they come from legal, we get them out there as soon as possible.
If there's a question, the amendment can be read into the record.
Well, I was going to say perhaps Alderman and McMenamin might want to restate the amendment, so we're voting on it.
You wish me to do that at this time? If you...the amendment, as we adopted it, to my recollection, said...was worded as "As such, City Water Light and Power shall prepare a written report to the council at least every six months summarizing all activity relative to the development and costs of the Lake Springfield project."
That's what I recall.
Are you taking that for a motion to amend?
No, we already amended it. He was just restating it. I would like to make a request pursuant to City Council Rule 621-8 for a fiscal note. That's the rule that we amended back in April of last year, and while this proposed ordinance does not per se require the expenditure of funds, I believe the rule still applies because the rule requires OMB to give an estimate, the anticipated change in expenditures or revenues to the city under its provisions, and if you look at the final section of this proposed ordinance, it does require the city to continue to apply for appropriate permits, acquire the remaining necessary property, and finance the construction of Hunter Lake. So, I believe that would have a cause of change, it would be correct to say that would anticipate that if we pass this, it creates an anticipated change in expenditures or revenues to the city. So, I think under the rule, we should have a fiscal note.
Can the Corporal District Council rule on that?
My ruling has been that it does not require a fiscal note because it does not immediately require the expenditure of funds, plus it is the readoption of a previous ordinance that's passed by the City Council regarding taking these actions for Hunter Lake.
The rule says that OMB shall prepare a brief explanatory statement or note that shall include a reliable estimate of the anticipated, it doesn't say mandated, anticipated changes in expenditures or revenues to the city under its provisions.
Alderman, ever so... I think that when we get to that point and we start spending money, we'll be obligated to have that. In fact, I just grabbed one off my desk on the way out, and I didn't really realize what the date was, but here's one from '97. We've had numerous documentations, numerous studies. If you are paying attention, in fact, I'll ask CWLP maybe to do an archive of all these studies that the people have spent and money, and every one of them lays out a cost, and those costs continue to go up.
What was the cost, anticipated cost in that study, Alderman?
For...I didn't read it, Sam. I didn't read it, but here is the whole, if you want to see it, there's a whole revy of numbers from one to the other of cost.
But does it have a total? I imagine it has a total.
Yeah, it's probably totaled in here somewhere, but this whole thing started when I was 11 years old. I'm now 63. We just keep going and going. It's like energy is a bunny, and we keep asking the taxpayers to fund study after study after study with no intent, and nobody hoped more than I did that the gravel pit-river combination would be a good deal for us because it would have saved us a lot of money. We would have been able to take the $28 million, put it back into a fund for CWLP, and hopefully not raise anybody's cost in the process. That didn't happen, and we studied and studied, and I think, quite frankly, every time we asked for a study, every time we asked for a cost, we have two companies in our...three, I think, in our community that we use, Crawford, Murphy, Tilly, Hanson Engineers, and Cummins Engineering, we've used them on projects. It's pretty much telling us that they don't know what they're doing and don't know how to do their job, but worldwide, they do it very well. I was one of the guys that said, you know what, we need to talk about alternative water sources. It didn't work out. They came back to us and said it's 1.8 million gallons was the best we could flow. I did briefly look at this. We would have to have, under this study, 32 different wells to produce the kind of gallons that we needed, and during a drought condition, each one of those wells would only do about 230 million...or 230 gallons per minute. We needed more than that, so I've been pretty much intense on watching all the studies that have been done. All this basically does is tell our community our intent to move forward and to reach those costs and to give them results and let the debate begin on Hunter Lake. We tend to get sidetracked, we tend to move one way or the other, and I'm going to push us forward and see how far we can go with this thing. The community deserves the answers, and the only way we're going to get the answers is moving forward with Hunter Lake. It's...I just think we're doing a disservice to the community. I told Sam the other night on the phone, I said, "I'm just glad that the previous council and commissioners pushed forth the lake, and it wasn't under this council because we'd still be studying it, studying it, and studying it, and it's time to make some positive action." And nobody watches the dollar more than me, so every time we go to spend something, I'm going to be writing it down and saying, "Uh-huh, here's one we didn't know about, here's one that's clearly in the studies." So, nobody's going to be watching the money any more than this group up here. We've done a pretty good job, but I think it gives a clear indication to our community where we want to go and how we get there, and then I think it's time for our community to get off of defense and go on offense and let the Corps of Engineers and the EPA either allow us to do something or tell us they've had enough. So, we can debate this all night. I don't know one person up here that hasn't heard a lively debate on Hunter Lake, the gravel pits or whatever. I don't think anybody that stands up in front of us tonight is going to change their mind. I think the 10 of us, you know how you're going to vote on this thing here, and I'm going to politely listen to everybody's comments, but I think it's time we move it forward. And Sam, I strongly disagree with your 6.1 because there is no cost in this other than giving clear direction and restating an ordinance that's already out there in front of us.
We've had nine people sign up to speak tonight, so why don't we go ahead, listen to the nine people that have signed up. There will be a three-minute limit on each individual, and then we can have a discussion after we've heard from the members of the audience. I would ask each of the people, as they come up, that they would state their name and address for the record. The first person...
Mayor, just an inquiry, don't our rules say that citizens have five minutes?
Our rules indicate that we can adjust that based on the number of people that we have. We have done one minute, we have done two minutes. First person is Donald Hanrahan.
I'm Don Hanrahan, Attorney at Law, 1119 South Sixth, Springfield, Home Address 909 Timber Ridge, Mechanicsburg. With three minutes, I'm not going to spend lots of time telling you again what I've been saying for the last 25 years and what the organizations I belong to have been saying for 25 years. CWLP gave you guys a chart about a week ago, or two weeks ago, that shows actual water use in the last 25 years since 1991, 23 years, and despite 13,500 more homes, despite 20-some-thousand more people, despite two huge hospital expansions, despite an immense power plant that's been built, actual use has risen by 10 percent. 10 percent. I'm not going to stand here and tell you again how to find the water you need without doing any alternatives, like fixing leaks, like, you know, 15 percent of the water is missing from leakage, like maintaining Lake Springfield and let it...instead of letting it fill up with mud, like taking power plants that are at the end of their useful life that consume millions of gallons of water, taking them offline. And I'm not going to belabor the fact that the Lane hydrology study did not rule out the use of the gravel pits as an alternative, as this ordinance claims. Suffice it to say that even if you accept that study at face value, what it means is that one time every 100 years, you have to learn to be a diplomat to divvy up 9 million gallons of water that's out there to share it with people who use 2 or 3 million gallons. And I'm not going to tell you, you know, Mr. Edwards, you know that they didn't study the river connection, that it was a narrow, focused study to determine what you can get out of a gravel pit without impacting somebody else's wells. They didn't look at asking Chatham, can you drill the wells deeper? They didn't ask the river connection, and they started the analysis with the gravel lakes three feet below full pool. Forget that. You know, we can...you can find me and we can talk about that later, but I want to talk about the cost because y'all don't really have an idea of what the costs are today. You have a 1997 study that said $74.5 billion to build the dam after acquiring the land. Well, they updated that in 2006, but they used the Consumer Price Index. That's not the right thing to look at. You should use the RSMs Construction Cost Index, and I wonder, why did they do that? Till I looked. Construction Cost Index is 80 percent.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask the gentleman a question?
Good...
Mr. Mayor, I thought we were going to let the public...
We're going to let...let's go through all of them.
By the way, Mayor, I looked at Rule 8.2, and it says that unless further time is granted by the presiding officer, the person addressing the council shall limit his or her address to five minutes. So, the rule basically says the presiding officer can give more than five minutes, but it doesn't say you can give less than five minutes.
No, we're given less than three. We're given three. Next, we have Bill Crook.
We ought to amend the rule then, if that's what we want to do in the future.
I live at 1821 Cherry Road in Leland Grove, and I'd like to urge the council to pay attention to what the EPA is saying to Springfield, and that's to really look at supplying the supplemental water we need in the least environmentally destructive way possible, and I think the council could be very forward-looking if they would abandon the Hunter Lake property and just see what an asset that 7,000-acre site could be to the community as a recreational and natural area, and that would be a very positive thing for Springfield. And I think meeting our water needs can be done in a very sensible manner through these...all the combined alternatives that have been, not alternatives, but water-saving measures and supplemental source measures and pumping from lowland aquifers, even if they're in 50 miles away along the Illinois River. I believe that's what Jacksonville's doing, and the EPA is just saying, "Let's get our water the least environmentally destructive way possible," and so the council needs to pay attention to that and oppose the endorsement of the Hunter Lake property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Wes King.
Good evening, City Council members. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposal in the...to move forward with Hunter Lake. I'm a lifelong citizen of Springfield.
Mr. King, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Wes King. I'm a lifelong citizen of Springfield.
And your address, please.
I live at 924 North Walnut, Springfield, Illinois 62702, and I'm here in opposition to this ordinance to move forward with Hunter Lake. While I appreciate the overall long-term perspective in planning and risk management that is behind this pursuit of a supplemental water supply, I believe that there are better ways to do this. Building a dam to create a surface water reservoir for the purpose of a public water supply is an antiquated model for public water supply delivery, and it will be both costly and destructive. One of the points in which the argument for Hunter Lake hinges upon is the resolution's assertion that the pump tests and the recent studies show a significant shortage of the city's supplemental water supply needs during a 100-year drought. I ask, what is significant? It was really hard to make that determination reading the resolution because no numbers were included in the resolution. Does significant have a gallons per day attached to it? Based on my own reading of the situation and research, assuming there is this need in a 100-year drought period, my understanding is that while I agree the study shows the gravel pits alone are not enough, particularly when you factor in the impact of other community water supplies in the media area, significantly is where I question. What is significantly? Significantly enough to justify spending millions on the construction of a new lake? That's what I have to question. What the study failed to do is take a comprehensive look at the suite of options that we have as a city, rather than just look at the gravel pits, nearby community usage impacts, and comparing those to Hunter Lake. I, my understanding research, shows that combining the supplemental water supply from the gravel pits, proper maintenance through dredging of Lake Springfield, a conservation rate structure, and emergency drought conservation measures in the situation of a 100-year drought, all those combined, we have the supplemental water supply we need. We don't need to go the route of building a destructive and costly lake. One final thought, as I said, this is an outdated model. It's not pursued as rarely anymore to build surface impoundment water reservoirs, so I really urge the council, if you do move forward on this, be very attentive to cost. My reading has shown that there is a small, very small chance that this will ever get approved by the EPA or the Army Corps of Engineers. I would hate to see the city waste money on pursuing a project that has significant opposition, and also, there's, you know, we don't know if we're even going to get it approved. Thank you for your comment tonight.
Thank you, Mr. King. Next, we have Jack Darin.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Jack Darin. I'm the Director of the Sierra Club Illinois Chapter at 70 East Lake Street in Chicago. I don't live in Springfield. I support the comments of the local residents who've talked about the resources at risk here and the alternatives that are available to you. I just thought I'd say a couple of words about the statewide perspective that we see happening around the topic of dam construction and removal across the state, where we really see cities taking a new look at old dams, and increasingly, towns are trying to move away from impoundments and reservoirs and rediscovering what free-flowing rivers and streams and open spaces can mean in terms of recreational assets and economic development opportunities for their towns. Danville just to the east just reached consensus on taking out their dam. The City of Wilmington up on the KKK is also looking at taking out their dam. The Department of Natural Resources has funds available, capital assets, because of the safety risks that dams pose and the damage they're doing to water quality, to help towns remove dams. So, I'd encourage you to take a look, and I know you have been looking very hard at alternatives, because that would really put you in step with where communities across central and all of Illinois are looking at futures without dams. If you want to choose a path to try to build a dam, the most recent example unfortunately you could look to would be the City of Marion, which for over 10 years tried a very similar project to build a surface water reservoir in light of available alternatives, in lieu of available alternatives, and ultimately, they were told no by the Army Corps of Engineers because of the damage that would do. So, I urge a no vote on the ordinance tonight. I think it's a path towards confrontation. If you're interested in looking at alternatives to the dam, I think you'd find very willing partners in the Sierra Club and the environmental community on both the economic and the regulatory challenges that you may face. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Bruce Siemens.
Mayor to speak. My name is Bruce Siemens. I live at 3579 North Oak Hill Road in Rochester. I'm a physician who works and lives in Rochester, which uses Springfield water. Being a small business owner and homeowner in Rochester, I've watched my water bills rise and are now competing with my internet and phone bills for second place behind my utility bills. I also was...I also wonder what is going to happen to my water rates if Hunter Dam is ever built. You may be told that it will only cost 80 million, or 100 million, or 120 million, but you really know what it is going to cost in the long term, and you know what our water rates are going to be. If you don't know the costs, how can you possibly approve this project? But we do know a couple of big costs that have been deliberately left out of the previous Hunter estimates, and that is riprapping and dredging. These are not just discretionary costs, these are necessary costs. If you're making a decision for Springfield's water future, a future that is going to last beyond 100 years, then those two cost factors need to be added to the equation and not fobbed off on our grandchildren's children. 10,000 years ago, when the glaciers melted, there were thousands of natural lakes over this countryside. Where did they all go? All that water became the aquifers that we now have in Illinois, and all those lakes filled up with our wonderful, rich prairie soils. The only lakes left are those that were man-made and those that are getting dredged. Dredging is very expensive, which is also probably why it is not systematically being done on Lake Springfield. What are the...so what are the water rates going to be when that begins? What are the water rates going to be when dredging begins on Hunter? By voting for Hunter, you are ethically voting on approving all the costs related to it, not just the cost to build it. Another interesting historic point is that Springfield's first water source was not only a dam on the Sangamon River, but also 40 water wells in the Sangamon River Aquifer. The system was abandoned in 1936 when Lake Springfield was built and began filling with sediment. So, Springfield's first water system was diversified, utilizing both surface water and water from an aquifer. Personally, I like the idea of having two different types of water sources. It makes me feel a bit safer, so that if in a 100-year drought ever came and Lake Springfield and Hunter Lake dried up, we would still have an aquifer available to draw from and a source of water that does not require dredging. Finally, I find it sad that Springfield lost a water customer in Chatham and then supposedly lost a water alternative to Chatham because Chatham had the foresight to take advantage of a good idea that Springfield sat on for decades. So, now we have a new alternative that needs to be considered, buying our water from Chatham. Isn't that ironic? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Clark Bullard.
I'm Clark Bullard, Springfield native, who watched the pipeline to the South Fork go in when I was a kid. I live at 509 West Washington in Urbana now. Come back here frequently to visit. I've seen this project unfold, and from the perspective of my position on the Board of Directors of National Wildlife Federation in Washington and the Board of Directors of Prairie Rivers Network here in Illinois, these organizations deal with literally hundreds or thousands of Section 401 and 404 permits under the Clean Water Act. And the 404, you were told in 1996 by the Corps of Engineers, that, quote, "Core officials will compare the construction of a lake to other ways of obtaining the water, such as running a pipeline to a river. Their goal is to pick a project that is least damaging to the environment, least damaging to the environment, but also practical." That was the chief of the Corps of Engineers Regulatory Branch in Rock Island. Those people came down and visited the mayor, CWLP staff, its consultants, and EPA in 2011, and presumably told them exactly what the law requires. And I don't know where you could have gotten optimism from them, that you're going to be able to take another run at the same permits and have any different result. They're obligated by law to tell you only what the law requires, not to give you any optimism or pessimism. If they did tell you something optimistic, I would think that dozens of national groups, and if they did issue a permit, that did not comply with the law and regulations, dozens of national organizations would go to court, organizations that love wildlife of all kinds for hunting and fishing and bird watching and natural habitat, because they would fear that this particular permit would set a precedent nationwide that would undo all the damage or all the...that would unleash the rampage of reckless dam building that the nation engaged in during the '30s to the '60s. By 1970s, when the Clean Water Act was passed, Corps of Engineers just finished Shelbyville Reservoir and abandoned four or five others in Illinois. So, to get around federal law, you know, federal appropriations, cities started proposing reservoirs, Danville, Georgetown, Marion, probably others. No permits get obtained. I don't understand why... I don't understand why you're willing to commit more money to more studies.
Thank you. Clark Bullard. Next, we have Ed Gregory.
I have one question. My name is Ed Gregory, 5066 New City Road, Pawnee, Illinois. But I came here tonight to tell you I saw it been taken care of. But I'd ask a question. When my mother bought the, when you sold the property to my mother about 25 years ago, she didn't have the proper knowledge that, that if something happens to the property, you're not going to be able to like. Who'd that go back to? All the people that had signed up, got their city, got their land sold, or passed away? Would that go to the relatives? Or what would you, what would, how would that work? I mean, how would the city give the land back to the people that passed? Would it be to the relatives?
It would depend on each individual contract would have to be looked at, and it would be depend on how that contract is written.
Well, what if, what if she didn't sign for that to be passed back to her relatives? What would happen to the land?
Again, it would be based on what the contract said.
And how would I find out? The county voting, then?
I would assume you, if you're a relative and she's passed, you have the contract.
My mother, yes.
Or a copy of it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Robert Wire.
Robert Wire. I reside at 1, or 316 Harbor Point Place on Lake Springfield. I have been a resident of Springfield since 1961, except for that 53 years. I did reside in Litchfield for three years. During that three-year period, I had an experience that I think pertains a lot to what the city is considering here. That was the fact that Litchfield constructed a Lake Lew Yeager, and is one of the few new reservoirs in the state of Illinois. It was a very successful project. I'm proud of having been a part of the design and construction of that project, and I saw the results of a, basically, a small sleepy town come alive with the fact that it had adequate, and more than adequate, a water supply. In my time here this evening, I only want to relate one other experience. That is, three years ago, I wrote a story that was published in the State Journal Register on April 14th, 2011, and they entitled it "Get Started on Hunter Lake," and essentially was the seven steps of, that would take you to the construction of Hunter Lake. And that's the reason I'm here this evening, to support this ordinance. I think it's very important that the council see fit, hopefully unanimously, to approve the ordinance, because if you do it that, in that fashion, it sends a message to the agencies that are the ones that will review and grant the permits for the construction. I think that's very important. It was something that's been lacking in the past, and so I urge you to go forward with this ordinance tonight. I believe that, that the, the officials at the Corps of Engineers, Illinois EPA, Illinois DNR, they're in tune with this council, as well as with your professional staff. Eric Hoppe, Ted Meckes, and others on their staffs are very capable, professional people. They should be allowed to proceed in the best possible and most economical fashion towards implementing the construction of Hunter Lake. And I think that, that feeling of the, of the regulators who are going to grant the ordinance, they, they need to know from this council that you really want to reestablish this intent in a strong fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Island, excuse me, Alan Bailey.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of the proposed Hunter Lake. My name is Alan Bailey, and I live at 2626 Tozer Road, Springfield, Illinois. I'm a director and currently serve as chairman of the Sangamon County Soil and Water Conservation District. I'm also a farmer in the Lake Springfield watershed. Soil and Water Conservation District has worked closely with CWLP for many years, and with their assistance, and cost share funds. From not only them, but also county, state, and federal government agencies, we have installed millions of dollars of best management practices throughout the watersheds of the county. We, as an organization, are not only in favor of doing this project, but in favor of doing it right. Stormwater management is a key issue in all watersheds all over the state. The corridor that would be flooded for this project floods hard and fast. This causes soil erosion, and those loose particles end up in the south fork of the Sangamon River, the same tributary that the CWLP currently uses to refill Lake Springfield when it is possible. By building the lake, the flooding would be eliminated, and the bottom ground that isn't farmed would have a useful purpose. This option would also be a localized resource that the city would have total control over. This means CWLP would be able to enact conservation practices into the new watershed to maintain the quality of water Springfield deserves. There are many other reasons why a second lake is necessary. In the world of water, you only get what you control. Some of the other measures that have been looked into are costly, don't supply enough water to meet our needs, or they would be at the detriment of other users. As I was, as I recall, there was an idea to run a pipe to the Illinois River to draw from there. As a farmer, I know that if we don't have enough water here, there's a good chance there's not going to be enough water to pump from the river either. It seems the only time this issue is brought up is when we're in a dry spell, and then it rains, and it is all forgotten. Tax dollars are another reason that this plays into effect. The city is always talking about how much it is growing, and how you're trying to lure industry here. If we draw the lake down as much as we did this past summer at our current population in the district, what about 10 years down the road with an increase in population, and hopefully, an increase in industry? A second lake would also increase fishing access, camping options, and more recreation than we currently have. The proposed lake would also increase the waterfowl habitat, as well as an increase of habitat of so many different wildlife to that area. Thank you for your time, and I hope you vote now and in the future in favor of the proposed Hunter Lake.
Thank you. That concludes the people that had, had signed up. So, further discussion in terms of the council, I think Alderman Simpson, and then Alderman Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in total agreement with Alderman Edwards. I think that we, as a council, need to show some leadership and make a decision. And leadership, meaning make a decision yea or nay. My concern, based on all of the reports that we funded, and I've sat here and listened to all the pros and the cons, my concern are several. We, we have to be responsible in terms of our leadership of this community. And when we think about an additional water, water source, do we discount our neighbors and say, "Well, you know, we're going to use wells or aquifers, or, and we don't care about you. We're just going to be only concerned about the citizens of Springfield." I don't think we can do that and be good neighbors. I believe that we, by voting for this, we send a message to the Army Corps of Engineers, we send a message to the EPA, that we've made a decision. Now, you need to make a decision with regard to the decision that we've made. And I think if we, if we don't, if we sit and don't do anything, we will continually have EPA respond, because, you know, they're figuring, you know, they don't know what they want to do. So, you know, why should we do anything? Of those individuals who spoke, there were only three from Springfield, two in favor, one against. Again, we are the elected representatives of the city of Springfield, and we need to make a decision with regard to this issue.
Thank you. Alderman Tyler, and Alderman Griffin.
If I could talk to Director Meckes. Ted? I'm going to ask him to clarify a couple of things that I think there may be some confusion about. I believe the approximate numbers, and you may, you may know better off the top of my head, but I believe the amount that we needed to be able to draw is, what, about 10 mega-gallons a day? Is that what it is?
About 10 million, 10 to 12 million gallons a day is the likely.
Right. And we were hoping that would come out of the gravel pits, but because of the South Sangamon Water Commission, because of Chatham, because of the wells, because of the farmers, because of everyone who draws on that area, and the fact that they're interconnected, the best we could hope for is between 1.5 and 2.0
Something like that, yeah.
Million gallons a day out of those gravel pits, without, as Alderman Simpson pointed out, adversely affecting everyone else who has ownership rights to that water.
Correct.
Okay. Because I believe that answers the question that one of the gentlemen had about significant numbers. So, the significant number is 10 million a day needed, and 2 million a day provided.
And I think one of the important parts is, you know, the study did show during a non-drought time, it'll supply 90 million gallons a day, but that number's not really relevant to a drought situation.
Right.
So, that's where, you know, there's a press release saying it could supply 75% of our needs. Well, nine of 12 would be 75%, but we're not worried about non-drought conditions. During drought condition, the study said, you know, around 1.6.
Right. And I think that I fully agree with something Alderman Edwards said. I, I don't think there's a single Alderman up here who wanted the gravel pits to not be the answer. You know, we were all crossing our fingers and hoping. We really were hoping we could dodge a bullet and avoid the cost and have a winning project here. But the water studies just don't support it. Now, the other thing that I was hoping you could explain, and I'm sure the gentleman sitting right behind you would really appreciate it as well, some people talked about it being turned into a wildlife refuge, or, you know, these different things. You know, if Hunter Lake's not built, that land's not going to stay ours, correct?
There is a large percentage by the contracts that revert back to the previous owners or heirs. Every contract, as the mayor pointed out, is a little unique. Some have some common language, but a lot of it would revert back to the previous owners. Some have reverted back to the cost we bought it in the 70s.
Correct. So, it'd be a, it'd be a loss for the city in some cases, and, but the big overall picture is, is that we're not going to keep the land. If the Hunter Lake is not an option, it goes, it's got to be offered back to the people who it was bought from, for one, and any of the ones that don't have a contract requiring that, I really don't think you're going to want to go into the business of being a landowner when you have a utility to run.
All the alternatives we looked at, other than that, get credit for the sale of all that land back. So, when we do our cost analysis, we've credited that by selling back all the land for Hunter Lake. So, when we look at the analysis of the other places, we've always assumed that land would be turned back to owners.
And we would have no control over what happens out there. Somebody could decide to turn and build a, you know, 2 million square foot mega mall out there, and there's absolutely nothing that we would be doing to stop it, because it's not our land anymore.
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Griffin?
Could I just ask a question while they're up there?
Wait, just one. Alderman Griffin was next, and...
I mean, my whole thing has always been on this the same of, you know, we all ran for this office. Some of us ran more than one time to do something for the community, so let's do something. Even if they come back and say, "You're not going to get it. We're not giving you a permit." Okay, we've done something. We moved off that page. We've been on that page for 50 years. I mean, what was this? This last ordinance said they were going to do it. That was 26 years ago this year. Nothing's happened. We've paid for more studies. We're going to do something. Well, as soon as we get, and with those studies, we come back with other studies. Now, go do them again. Now, those other ones are too old, so let's do them again. We're just going to keep chasing this tail forever unless we get off, off the page and do something here. I mean, we talk about, let's do something, you know? You're going to get snow plowed on somebody's street once, or you're going to get zoning done for somebody once, but let's do something for this community as a whole, for the long haul, one way or another. If this isn't the answer, fine, we go to something else. But let's stand up, have them give us an answer, and move forward, or let's go in another direction. Let's decide what we're going to do. I mean, again, a couple of things that said tonight, we're not going to have a 7,000-acre park. We can't afford that. We're going to use that to do whatever else we do if we do something different. That, that's out. We talked about cost. There is a lot of cost to this. No matter what happens, we're going to have a lot of cost. What is value of having water in this town? If you, you know, we talked about before, if you, if, if power goes out, you turn on a candle, you turn on the fireplace, you turn on a generator. If your water shuts down in your city, your city is now out of business. It's done. For how long? Who knows? Somebody moves out. I don't know what the value of water is when there isn't any out there. It's like somebody said tonight, you only own, and, I'm not sure, I wrote, I wrote it down because I thought it was so nice, in a world of water, you have what you can control. And if we don't set things in place to be able to control enough water to provide for our citizens, we're not doing our job.
Alderman Kim.
Mayor, thank you. Mr. Meckes or Director, the question I had was, I got an email from Mr. McCarty, or Director McCarty, today indicating that he thought that CWLP had signed on yesterday a contract with Hanson to update the cost of building Lake Two. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, that, but that contract isn't coming before the council?
It's under 25,000.
Okay. So, when do we, will that take into account the costs of mitigation costs, riprap, and other costs that were not taken into account before?
They weren't taken into account.
Yeah, that's one of the statements that was made up here. Riprap is a consideration. We've got the cost. That was absolutely a consideration. Dredging would occur maybe once every 50 years or so, so it's not an upfront cost of building the lake. So, dredging is included, or, I mean, not dredging, but riprap is already included. So, they will include all that cost. And we will be coming back for the council for another consultant to update the cost of the other alternatives, because we have to look at all of them
Right.
Before we can pursue the next permit.
This, what Hanson is doing, will that also include the cost of dealing with the, or compensating the cities like Pawnee and other cities where we'll be infringing on their sewage systems or other systems?
Yes, it will.
Yes. And that's also been one of the things that's been addressed, is the water quality. Water quality into the lake, there's phosphates. We will not make the water in the lake worse. We'll actually make it better. The current streams have high phosphate, or phosphorus standards, and by treating this water, as we would propose, sent it to sanitary district, it actually reduced the phosphorus into those riverways, or those streams that are there. So, you know, actually, it, our lake would actually improve water quality. Where they say we can't meet it, it's because of the existing tributaries that would feed into the new lake do not meet the standards because of farm runoff and because of sewer discharge into there, that those current cities would not get permitted in their processes today.
I was at the public hearing, I think it was at UIS in 2008, that the EPA had, and I think the, the hearing officers stated that we, or there was some statement that we would not, the new lake, Lake Two, would not be able to meet the phosphorus standards that exist now, and the old lake, it didn't, you know, was grandfathered in, so it didn't matter. Isn't that going to be a problem to...
The phosphorus standards, there's legal parts of that. You cannot make it worse. Our lake does not make the phosphorus worse.
You mean Lake Two won't?
Lake Two. The current river, the current streams, the creeks that would feed into it, do not meet the phosphorus standard. Actually, the lake would be diluted, and also removing the half-treated sewage that gets into those streams from those other villages and taking it to sanitary district would actually also improve the water quality that would be feeding into the lake. So, it's not, as it says, it would not meet the phosphorus standard, but there's, there are rules about how it doesn't. You cannot make it worse. You can't impact it. So, there's other rules that you have to look at.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, to the proposed ordinance, Alderman Griffin said we have to do something. I agree, we have to do something to meet our water needs, but this proposed ordinance doesn't do something. In my opinion, it does nothing. It's not needed, because this city council, or the prior city council back in December of 1988, passed an ordinance that was sponsored by then Alderman McNeil, that specifically says that the city council hereby authorizes the construction, development, and completion of Lake Springfield Two, and the city of Springfield with supplemental water supply, and it authorized the OMB to prepare a bond proposal and, for funding the land acquisition and preliminary engineering design plans. It directed Corporation Council and Corporation with the Office of Public Utilities to proceed with the acquisition or condemnation of the remaining land, and for the, for the construction development of Lake Two, and it directed the Office of Public Utilities and the Corporation Council to apply for all necessary permits. And finally, it authorizes the Public Utilities Office to prepare and submit preliminary engineering plans for Lake Springfield Two. So, what this, what this proposed ordinance does, or purports to do, it's already been done, and so if we wanted to do something, this just repeats something that was already done before. If we, if we wanted to do something, if we wanted to repeal the ordinance from, in 1988, that would be doing something, but this is just repeating what was done in 1988. And the Army Corps of Engineers has set forth pretty clearly on their, it's right on their website. You can look at it on your, on the internet, and they, they set it out, what the city would need to do to... need to do to get the permit to build Lake Two. It says the city would need to convincing, demonstrate convincingly that the use of gravel pits and groundwater wells is not a practical alternative, that the city will have to look at all, at the other alternatives, as well as taking into consideration realistic future needs and costs, and updated delineation of wetlands and waters of the United States will be required as well as a mitigation plan, the sewage issue with some smaller cities, and updating the endangered species and cultural impacts. If the city, the only way the city's going to get a permit, it doesn't matter whether we pass this resolution or not. The law, I mean, the federal environmental laws are not going to change if we pass a resolution that we already passed back in 1988. We, you know, if we can't show that this is the best and cheapest alternative to meet the city's needs, we're not going to get the permit. If we can, we will get the permit. So, and the, as far as the gravel pit study, I don't think that gravel's pit study convincingly or closed the book, was enough to close the book on the gravel pits, because it was a static study. It didn't, it said it had as part of its criteria that we had to not affect or lower the wells of our neighboring cities that have wells that are affected by the aquifer. And so that's why it could only get maximum 2 million gallons a day during a drought, but we could work arrangements with the other cities, maybe build them deeper wells, which would be much cheaper than building a complete Lake Two, and those deeper wells would satisfy their needs and we would satisfy our own needs. Or we could send, the city of Springfield could send some water back to those cities to compensate them for the reduction in water due to what we would be taking from the aquifer. And also, it didn't, I don't believe it adequately studied the connection between the aquifers and the Sangamon River. So the bottom line is, I think this ordinance, while well-intentioned, I think it's, it's just simply repeating something that was already done by this council back in 1988, and it's not necessary.
Alderman Lescow?
Yeah. On this study that you signed with Hanson's today, is there an idea of how long it'll take them to do this study?
Um, it was about three months.
Three months?
Three to four months of what they bought.
Okay.
But they don't have a purchase order yet.
Right. Well, also in that, will they take a lot, how long will it take to...
Yeah, yeah, we can discuss that with them. And what they had said previously was 18 months, two years to design, and about two years to build.
Okay. And then, as far as the tax impact on it, how soon will we know that?
Uh, once the study comes back and the alternative analysis costs come back, we'll be able to figure out what each one would cost right there.
Okay, so we'll have a better handle probably in three months. All right, thank you.
Alderman Turner?
Is the second study that you described going to be done simultaneous with this one, or is it going to be done after this one is concluded?
The second study on the other alternatives, simultaneous.
Simultaneous.
Yes.
Is Hanson going to be doing that study as well?
Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly. The original design, Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, in 1988, studied the alternatives, gravel pits, uh, the gravel pits, the Avantolola, and the, Hanson did the Hunter Lake. So we're going back to the original.
Because they have the most records on it, so, on those alternatives.
So you're still looking at the same timeline that you discussed with Alderman Lescow?
The CMNT study may take a little longer. It's a little more involved. We have to contact the Imperial Valley Authority and up near the Avantolola lands and discuss with them, you know, their situation, whether we can even, the wellfields are, so that may take a little bit longer.
Alderman Dove?
And then Alderman McMenmaughan?
I have to thank Alderman Kenman for saying most of the things that I was going to say, because it would have been painful for everybody. But in addition to that, didn't, did Hanson do the 2000 study that we did for EIS?
Something.
They did?
A lot, yes.
Okay. All right. A couple of, I know Sam had brought up the memo that was sent out by the Army Corps of Engineers in August of last year, and the one thing in addition to that spoke about, and I apologize if I'm repeating what you said, but the one thing in there that really stuck out to me towards the end of the memo was that the Almo EPA representatives discussed the requirements, and an important issue that was discussed was that the proposed lake would likely violate state water quality standards. So no matter if you go through all this work, even they think that it's likely to violate the state water quality standards. The other thing is, we're going to hire the company that did this back in 2000. That in 2000, all their dollar amounts were based on 1997-dollar amounts. That even states it in the book. If you do a study in 2000, you use 2,000 numbers, not three years previous. So to me, this study's worthless because the numbers aren't even right. I think the study that was done by Lane is interesting, because when it comes to the gravel pits, the only one you have any measurements on that are, that are accurate are the ones we own. Problem that they had in this environmental impact study was the size of the gravel pits were 11 years old. Now, the gravel pits continued to dig for 11 years, and they increased in size significantly, which then increased the water capacity. There are no figures in here of the size of the other gravel pits in here for a reason, because they've expanded a lot. And the only one that's in here is clearly, there's absolutely nothing in here about the other gravel pits as alternatives, and how they've expanded even since this, which is 12 years later. So I just, I, I think, and the other thing is the cost. You know, you've got seven bridges you have to construct. You have five road relocations that you have to do. You have 30 or 20 roads you have to abandon. You have nine turnarounds that you have to make where you abandon those roads. You have your dam on the north side, and currently, there's at least three cemeteries that this will affect directly, and the city has to pay to relocate those burial plots out of the, the region where the lake is going to be. Not to mention the other issues that, that it affects, the houses, the businesses, the historical stone homes that are in the area. 2000 even stated there are 39 endangered species in the Hunter Lake watershed. Who knows if that's changed in 2012? The other thing that I think a lot of people don't realize is, is that with getting something, there's always something you lose in return. And on Hunter Lake, in order to try to offset the amount of environmental impact, that the city actually has to flood Riverside Park so it can become a wetland. So you lose the entire Riverside Park over there on the north side, which never exists. There's a lot of people that use that park, and the horses are down there, and a lot of people use the barns. Kids go out there for camp, and they do the horse riding, et cetera. That's all gone. So, and even in the, in the comments of the EIS study from 2000, and I hope you could find this and look through it again, I would just suggest looking through all the comments that came in, and the questions that were brought up, and the answers to those questions that were brought up by the Almo EPA, and the questions they had about it. I think you'll find that, that I don't see a clear cut, if we vote for this, that the EPA's going to give you anything. And besides, I don't, I meant to look this up, and I didn't, but I know the last time that a permit that the EPA gave for a large watershed property is, been quite a while, longer than what we've been doing this. So I don't see them changing their mind anytime soon. And like Kenman said, in 88, it was passed unanimously. They went full bore. History's repeating itself, guys. Why play the wheel all over again and get stuck between another $20 million in cost for something that's, that's most likely, even in EPA's terms, of 2013? It's probably not going to happen. So I'm all for doing what's best for the city, but I just, I also want to make sure that it's the right thing, and I don't see how you could do it without the cost as well. When you have no cost whatsoever, the last cost you have are, are figures from 1997 and before. So $74 million is ridiculous.
Well, there's been a few talks about the Lane study. I think you have the first Lane study, first look to see how much water. For the second Lane study, which got to the drought conditions, we actually went out and measured every pit. We have exact volume of all the pits, and that was considered in the second Lane study that produced 1.6 million gallons a day. So we did do that in the second study. There was actually pathometric measurements of every gravel pit as of, was at the time of study last fall.
Did we get that?
Yes. Yeah, we've got that.
Can I get a copy of it then?
Yep. The other thing too is, Alderman Kenman mentioned, is, you know, taking water and sending it to the other communities and working with those communities. The Lane study showed that the South Sangamon Water Commission's wells would not supply enough water in a 100-year drought for their own communities without any impact from the city of Springfield. So, you know, don't forget that. They're already in trouble without us taking any water. That's why in the study, we could not take any water from the south gravel pits, is because they were already impaired without anything else. So if we take water from the gravel pit and then turn around and ship it to another village, that's new demand. That nets us zero. That doesn't create anything for us. Talking about digging deeper wells, that was mentioned earlier. This aquifer is a very shallow aquifer. The wells already go to gravel, or go to basically bedrock. There's no more room to go down. There's no more aquifer. They've hit bedrock. This is a shallow aquifer. This is not like the Mohammed aquifer that some other people have talked about in the past, that is very deep. This one is in the 20-some-foot range. We've, we've done the test when Lane did the test. So, and you know, on the river connection, I think Alderman McMenmaughan walked out with Tom Skelly, and was it you? And the gravel pits sit higher than the river. There is a connection during floods. There is a connection, but that connection is not viable during a flood. We're not worried about the river flooding into the gravel pits. The gravel pits actually sit higher than the river. There is no connection during low-water connections. We, we actually walked out there, and I believe you walked out there, and was that a correct assessment of what you observed?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, you know, that's floating around, it's been mentioned tonight, so, you know, we're not here to mislead anybody. We'll be very honest. We'll talk about every issue that's out there, and if somebody knows something, we will address it. You know, the power plants, they're valuable. Month of January, our plant saved our consumers in Springfield over $4 million versus the price of power in the market because of the demand. Shutting down our power plants and just arbitrarily closing them down will have a great cost to this community in jobs and electricity prices, without a doubt. Right now, we've seen an increase in demand because of winter prices. When supply drops, because many plants are going to retire, there's going to be the same volatile pricing in the future. This is what we're protecting our consumers against. And so saying just arbitrarily shut that down is free, that's not true. You know, meeting the water quality standards with the new lake is what we've talked about. It's phosphorus. The current tributaries that would flow into there do not meet the water quality standards. We're not making the water worse. By diverting the affluent from these other villages and trying to capture more water, it would actually dilute it compared to the existing streams. So we're, we're aware of those issues, and we're working through those. And, you know, there are, there are a lot of different issues. Another thing that's mentioned is 15% unaccounted water. Assumed it's all leakage. Well, 15% of 30 million gallons a day, you know, would be maybe 4 million gallons, 4.5 million gallons. We're not leaking 4.5 million gallons. That's, you know, three times the entire use of the village of Chatham. This is metering inaccuracies. They changed about 215 of our largest meters, and we got a 24% increase in consumption. The meters are mechanical. They're 20, 30 years old. They get debris. They slow down. That's our, that's our inaccuracy. That's unaccounted for water, is because the meters slow down. If we're leaking millions of gallons of water a day in the, in the streets, we find out about that real quick through phone calls. So, you know, to say that if we just fixed our leaks, we'd have millions of gallons of water is inaccurate. It's a metering inaccuracy, and we're aware of that. And as we change out meters, we had some customers add 400% increases in their usage as we got to an accurate meter. But across the board, we saw, just in 215 meters, we saw a 24% increase in the amount of water we were filling.
Alderman McMenmaughan?
I respect the Alderman that brought this ordinance to the council tonight. I think it focuses our attention on something particularly important, especially after the Lane studies, which explored the gravel pit alternative. My concern is that we have one study that was just launched two weeks ago, the water demand study going forward several decades, and we don't have the results back yet from that study. And we've heard two additional studies that are in the process of being launched tonight. One would examine the cost of Lake Two, Hunter Lake, by Hanson engineers, and the second study would be by Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly that would examine the costs of the various alternatives to Lake Two. So the, the problem here is that we've got a ordinance that has a purpose tonight that is to influence the regulatory bodies, but if the regulatory bodies see that this council voted on a proposal without all the facts, without three studies that we're talking about tonight, I think that undercuts the weight that can be given to our vote tonight. So therefore, it seems that we're better off leaving this ordinance in committee, getting the results of these three studies that are pending, and then after we get those studies, if we, hopefully would even have a, a stronger vote if that evidence points us in one direction as opposed to, I don't know what the split vote might be tonight. So I would just think that our action would be more significant after we get these studies back. So if this comes to a vote tonight, I'd have to abstain, because we, we don't have enough information by which to make a clear-headed and intelligent decision.
Alderman Dove?
Is there a reason why we didn't contact Green and Bradford, since they did the studies for Chatham? The reason why I asked is I've had the opportunity to see those when they were investigating those, because they actually talked to my father and I, when he was still alive, about drilling wells out there, high-capacity wells on our land. I told him I wouldn't do it because I'm a Springfield resident. But the volume of wells that are out there and what can come out of them from their studies that they did are remarkably different than anything you guys have. And since they've done the studies, and obviously they've done the work and, and see everything that, that was good for Chatham, why are we paying somebody again to do studies from data that's decades old as opposed to somebody who just did it?
Well, I would be concerned on the studies. I mean, Lane is a very knowledgeable outfit. They produced a report that said they may have trouble.
But they did it on your numbers. They did it with your numbers.
They didn't use any of our numbers.
They used, they used all, you even told us that when you gave us the report, that they used the numbers you gave them. It says in here that it was difficult to do sites B and C because of the lack of information.
That was the first, that was the first report. Second report, we worked with all the owners, and we actually went out and did surveys. We took measurements of every one of them and provided those volumes.
Why didn't we do that on the first report? It seemed kind of like we paid for two reports.
The first report was to see what the availability was. If there was not enough availability, there's no sense doing this second.
The detailed study.
So they said there was availability based on the numbers that you gave them the first time?
And we wanted to see a more accurate number in the second report, and we got information from each well owner, their well depth, their pumpage rates, all that information, as well as all the pathometric information from the other gravel pits.
The first study did not consider any impacts on community wells.
I understand.
Other communities. And we were just trying to see, is there enough volume, even considering this as an alternative? And then looking back, there is enough volume. Then we had to go the next step and say, what impacts does it have in other communities during drought condition? And that's where the second, I think, answers a lot of the questions. It does have...
I would like to see that, because I, for some reason, I don't have it in my stuff. I've got a whole box of it.
We've provided copies, but we'll get you a copy.
I just, I find it hard to believe that we had 9 million gallons here, and considering the size of the places that we impact, that it's going to take 8 million gallons, since Chatham only takes 1 million gallons a day, and it's got 10 times the amount of, of commercial and, and everything that, that any of the surrounding communities that we would impact have. So I just, it, it doesn't add up to me.
Alderman Lescow?
I don't know if I've ever said this before, but I agree with Alderman McMenmaughan tonight. I think that, I think that this is, and Joe and you, I've talked about a lot of things. But I think this is really premature. I think we absolutely have to have the facts here before us. I think everybody here on this council or on this horseshoe wants to do the right thing. They want to see something move, whether it would be, you know, that we turn the land back, whether we move ahead. But I think it would be best, and I'm going to be abstaining from this vote tonight, because I think it would be best to wait till we have the three studies completed so that we're able to make an informed and intelligent decision. So, I support you, Alderman McMinniman. If you make that motion, I'll second it.
Mayor?
Alderman Cammon?
A question. You said that the statement that we are losing fifteen percent of the water from leakage is not accurate because of the inaccuracy of the old meters. What in your, what is the percentage of water that we're losing from leakage?
You know, that's, that's going to be just an estimate. I don't know if you have some, I mean, we're updating the high service, low service pump station. We'll have more accurate meters. We haven't changed out all the small older house meters. We've got a lot of meters that are still twenty, thirty years old. So, trying to estimate all of those, it's very difficult. We do have some natural leakage that occurs. Is it in the millions of gallons? I don't think so.
So, basically, the way that fifteen percent number was yielded was you take the amount of water that was put into the system and the amount that the meters measure went out and the difference is fifteen percent?
Yep.
Mount delivered, not sold.
Pardon me?
Mount delivered, not sold.
It's the amount that leaves the filter plant versus the amount that we build for. And the vast majority of that would be metering because the meters are mechanical. They don't speed up. They only slow down.
Over time, you mean, I would like that. Okay.
Alderman Turner?
Yeah, I have not been on the council as long as any of the co-sponsors of this ordinance. And I, just, just the short time I've been here, I understand their frustration because I, I'm frustrated too. But I don't know that we can jump forward in haste because we're frustrated and not act cautiously and prudently when it comes to this matter. I mean, we're here tonight talking about voting on, on an ordinance that says we want to move forward with Hunter Lake when our CWLP leadership is saying that they have two other studies that haven't even began yet. And we have no idea what those are going to say. And I, I, I think that it would, that we would be foolhardy to rush into a confirmation of moving forward with Hunter Lake without at least waiting until we get that information that obviously the CWLP leadership feels is important. And then I also go back to what Alderman Cammon said, that in 1988, there was a very similar ordinance that was passed and it didn't do anything to jog the Army Corps of Engineers or anybody else to move any expeditiously, any more expeditiously on providing the permits that we have been seeking. So, if the purpose of this ordinance is to be a catalyst for that action, it didn't happen in 1988. And I, I don't know that we have any, you know, any hope that it would be any more successful in 2014. So, I, I agree with Alderman McMinniman and Alderman Lesko that maybe we should just wait until we at least get the information back from the two studies that our CWLP leadership has just recently commissioned.
Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I just had a question. It seems to me, just listen to us, we always want to find fault with whatever the situation is, one way or the other. There's somebody one to the extreme, one not to the extreme. I don't want to believe what you told me. Does this ordinance help CWLP move forward? Or does it not help you? I, I look at it as a position that gives the city a direction to say, look, we've been studying this thing for forty years. And this, as I read it, says it's reestablishing the intent. It doesn't say that it's taking the place of. It says that it's reestablishing because I think we've been all over the board like this. And this has given us a focus to move forward. And I bet you if I was a betting guy, that you guys decided to do this study because we decided to say, you know what, we're going to support you in this and we're going to move this forward now. Maybe I'm wrong and maybe that's not right, but I got a feeling that's what caused kind of this thing to be laid out there was because one of the things that we said to you was, we want to have costs along with what we're doing. And where are we at today on this? And you didn't have those answers. So, this ordinance here, I would pretty much bet is the catalyst for these studies. And you can tell me I'm wrong if you want, but I got a feeling that's going to measure into this equation.
You, you are, are right in the sense that it's increasing the sense of urgency. You know, we have, there are certain things we have to do to take any permit to the Corps and the EPA. And some of these studies are requirements and that was laid out. You know, we as a community bought the gravel pits and that sent mess signals to the Corps. You know, did we, we were pursuing a Hunter Lake application at the same time we bought a gravel pit. And so, the Corps expressed concern. So, this does provide us direction that we need to pursue this. And we're going to pursue Hunter Lake. If we come back with these costs and we say there's a viable alternative, as you mentioned, you wanted the gravel pits in the Sangin River. Those work for us and they provide a ten million gallons a day, we would be standing here advocating for that. Those weren't free. Those had a cost, but we want the lowest-cost viable alternative. When, when we did, when we found out nine million gallons a day from the first report, we were optimistic. Let's pursue this further. Let's go after it. And so, we've done that. You know, as we sit here, it's, it's good to know our leadership wants us to pursue this alternative. If we come back and we say, you know what, we need to look at the Havana lowlands, we're going to come back and say that to you. You know, we will bring that back to this council. But right now, the city's pursued Hunter Lake in the past. We've bought a lot of property for this. It's been the primary thing as has been stated in the eighty-eight ordinance. And we want to pursue that and know that we have support because the last thing we want to do is spend a lot of our resources and time pursuing a permit that will not ultimately be approved by this body.
So, this does serve a purpose tonight in your eyes?
Yes, I think it does.
Thank you.
Alderman Griffin?
I, I fully, I've been frustrated as long and as much as anybody up here. You know, we waited thirty-five, forty years for them not to answer the question. And as soon as we buy a gravel pit, they're not going to answer the question because we bought a gravel pit. But that wasn't the answer for the first forty years. I don't know if they're ever going to give us an answer. And I think they're just going to keep chaining you guys around and not giving you an answer one way or another. And I don't think we're ever going to get to get this thing done. Anything to get, that gets us off-center, if this isn't the route, we got to go another route, that's great. But at least let you guys know, that's done. Let's move on. But it just seems like we're never getting, I wish someone could come, some media outlet comes, puts them up front and says, if you do this, 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 and this, we'll give you an answer and I'll vote for whatever it takes to them to give us an answer. And then let's, then let the chips fall where they may. Let's build it or let's move on.
Alderman.
I have to echo what Alderman Griffin is saying. I think the, the big thing for me on this is, this is reestablishing the current status quo. For those of you on the fence, I see this as, this is just us restating as a current council, what's already on our books. And we are saying that, as Alderman Griffin said, you need to give us an answer. If they come back and say no, we start liquidating the property, we start looking at the next thing, we keep moving. If they say yes, it does not mean that we're going to go out there with a backhoe and start digging. That cost estimate is going to come back to this body and this body's going to have to make a decision as to the cost of the project. All this does is give them one more bullet, I'm hoping more like a bazooka, to try to get them to answer the goddamn question they've been avoiding for fifty years.
You don't have to sugarcoat it because we're here.
I don't sugarcoat much. Most people.
And I'll take offense there on that statement.
I've got Sam. And then I've got Alderman McMinniman. And then I got Duff.
This, this ordinance is not going to cause the Army Corps making any more likely that the Army Corps will issue the permit or not. It's, we have to do, you know, the studies that they're directing us to do that's stated on their website. And if the criteria are met, then I suppose they'll grant the permit and if not, they won't. I had a question for Chief Engineer Hobby. You said, I think you said something that, well, if we didn't, if we decided not to go with Hunter Lake, we'd study the Havana lowlands. But from my reading of what's on the, the Army Corps' website, it says the city will have to look at the other alternatives, I mean, in addition to the gravel pits. So, wouldn't we have to, in any event, as part of the, even if we wanted to pursue Hunter Lake, wouldn't we have to study or consider the Havana lowlands?
You, what you said was not what I said. What I said is, and what Director Meck has stated is, CMT is going to study Havana lowlands and update the cost. It's going to update the Illinois River Valley. So, we're going to get updated costs and we're going to look at our, with, along with our long-term water assessment need, we're going to look at all the alternatives. And if it comes back as another one is the preferred resource, we will come back to this body. We have to do that with the Corps and EPA. We recognize that. That's why we're pursuing with these studies. We're not doing this because we just feel like it. This is a requirement to achieve any viable alternative water supply.
And then if down the line, where you find that one of those alternatives is better, you'll let us know that, that's your determination.
And that's why we pursued the South Sangin Water, or the South Sangin, the river than the aquifers. You know, if that came out as a viable alternative, we would have pursued that one.
Mr. McDemin?
Mayor, I just want to review procedurally where we're at with this ordinance. I think there was a motion.
Motion in a second.
I think there's a motion for, for passage.
Passage.
So, I can't make a motion, Alderman Lesko, unless that motion is withdrawn. I think if it does go to vote, there's probably four yeses and, you know, two or three no's and maybe two or three abstains. So, I think those that placed the motion for passage, the question becomes, do we want to do a vote tonight or wait for, after these studies? And so, it's the, the, the burden is now on those that made the motion, whether they want to withdraw the motion so a new motion could be made or, or whether we just, I guess no new motion would have to be made. It could just be left in committee that way.
Alderman Duff, agree?
I was just going to say, Frank, I would agree with you if twenty-six years ago, they didn't have the hundred percent green light to go in eighty-eight. And here we are twenty-six years later and nothing's happened. They had the entire green light to go. The council's behind it. They asked OBM to do the studies, to fund everything, to move forward with the permits, even trying to move forward with permits with CWLP. And you see where it's gotten us. And obviously, if it was a slam dunk deal, we wouldn't be getting the push we're getting from EPA. The other thing is that EPA is not going to give you an answer, period, without doing all the studies. And that's all we've been doing up for the last fifty years is study, 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 study.
That's the point.
So, the point is, why keep doing studies on something they're not going to sit there and do? That's, that is the point. I mean, I don't understand why we spent twenty million up to this point.
Give me an alternative.
And we're fighting about it again.
Give me an alternative.
Well, I think we need to look at the alternatives a lot stronger than this.
More studies.
Before you sit there and ask something where you know nothing about what the cost is going to be.
You're complaining about studies, but you want more studies. That makes a lot of sense.
No, you said you needed studies.
No, you said we needed more studies.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
For Hunter Lake.
That's right.
Yeah. You need more studies for Hunter Lake in order for the EPA to even give you a yes or a no.
Do we have more discussion in terms of the, of the ordinance? Are we ready to do a, do a vote? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion to pass, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion fails. Four, five with one extension. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading. Agenda number twenty-fourteen dash one-zero-nine, an ordinance authorizing execution of an integrated supply agreement between Genuine Parts Company, doing business as Napa Auto Parts, and the city of Springfield, Illinois, and Mount Notic, seeing $3,750,000 from March one of 2014 through February twenty-eighth, 2017, for the Office of Public Works.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, I've got some concerns about.
This is just first reading.
Move to consent.
It's just first reading.
Just to add it to the first reading.
Oh, so moved, I mean. That's what I meant to say. Thought we were so long on the water to this point. So moved.
Is there a second? It's moved in second discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number twenty-fourteen dash one-one-zero, an ordinance authorizing an additional $65,000. Purchase rock salt from Cargill Incorporated Salt Division under state contract PSD four-zero-one-seven-five-five-zero for a total amount not exceeding $326,950 for the Office of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming forth?
Yes, Mayor. This has to do with the two ordinances we just placed on first reading. Corporation Council, you had worked on an ordinance earlier this week having to do with city council approval for paying automatic cost of living pay increases for our non-union personnel. You drafted up that ordinance. I believe you communicated in an email that you had placed that ordinance on first reading tonight.
Yes.
And so, could you give an explanation of what happened?
It's first reading. So, it's twenty-fourteen dash.
It's ready to break in the vote.
In your package.
Okay, very well. Thank you. I thought it was going to be by exception to the rules. Thanks a lot.
Alderman Simpson, do you?
Yes, it's Director. Thank you. One of the reasons why I withdrew the amendment to the budget is because I understood you to say that you were going to look at methods to increase library hours. Have you started that?
No, we have not. I think at the end of the last meeting, there was discussion with Joe Davis and Alderman Thailand about perhaps getting together with you to have a meeting and talk about our ideas and then go back and look at those ideas. So, we have not done that yet. Can you, Mr. Davis?
Sign it up.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no further here.
Yeah, no, I had, oh, I'm not particularly sure you mean.
Boy, any more unfinished business?
Yes, yeah. I did have something. I just wanted to take a minute to remember a Springfield icon who passed away last week and all too young of an age. Of course, I'm talking about Bob Murray, longtime Springfield indicator, radio and TV personality. Bob had that rare personality that made anyone feel good. And I know the mayor would go on his radio show every month for Ask the Mayor and I'm probably, probably every Alderman was interviewed by him. And you felt when you were with Bob that he had a genuine interest in what you were saying and what you're doing, you were doing because he did. And one thing you say about Mr. Murray, there wasn't a drop of phoniness in Bob Murray. So, I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on, on, you know, one of our most revered members of our community. And thank you for the opportunity.
Alderman Turner?
I would like to echo Alderman Cammon's comments. I, I remembered Mr. Murray from a lot of different media venues. And one thing that I can say about him that you don't find too often nowadays is that he was always extremely prepared for his interviews. He knew the subject matter and he could talk intelligently with not only the person being interviewed, but with any callers that would call in. And we don't find that too often today. So, he will definitely be thoroughly missed.
Alderman. WTAX News Director Alex Stegman is here tonight. And so, I hope that you'll pass along these comments to the family of Mr. Murray and to the entire staff at WTAX and the affiliated stations that worked with Mr. Murray, who always treated us in the highest and best way. Thanks a lot.
There's no more unfinished business, none of new business. Alderman Thailand?
Yes, I know the north end Alderman, specifically Doris Turner, is very proud of their LHS.
Yes.
But on the west side, there is an LHS that's also deserving of recognition that hasn't received much from the local media. The Lutheran High Crusaders Boys Varsity Team is twenty-six and three. They won their first regional title in school history last week for boys basketball. They play in the sectional game Wednesday night versus Whitehall North, North Green in Oakville, which is two and a half hours away. Whichever person in IHSA scheduled that needs to be fired. And I think that there's definitely something to say about our, our city as a, as a basketball community at the moment. I'm wearing my blue and white in support of the Lutheran High Crusaders. And I hope everybody can pay a little bit of attention and wish them well.
I'll be watching them tonight and I'll be wearing my orange tomorrow for our twenty-five and one. And even at twenty-five and one, we still have the best record in all the states. So, I'm really happy.
I'm just glad to see two teams in the city doing this well.
That's good.
And I'm looking forward to a state championship.
I am too.
I think we all are. And twenty-five and one isn't bad.
If there, if there isn't any business coming forth, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.